We have a moment of solid meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're called to order this meeting of the Montegay County Commission. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. First item on the agenda is consent and approval with our county administrator, Renetta McClure. Renetta?
Morning.
Morning.
Sixteen exonerations for $1,019.48, minutes for June 9th, 2021. Vouchers, General County Fund, $122,769.28. General School Fund, $37.50. 911, $14,899.93. Chestnut Ridge Park, $522. Camp Muffley, $34. Mason Dixon Park, $360.10. Transportation levy, $31,929.07. Library levy, $7,836.35. Assessors valuation, $3,845.70. Day Report Center, $674,905.20. Purchasing card vouchers, General County Fund, $6,037.50. Call Severance, $501.12. 911, $8,029.60. Mason Dixon Park, $59.38 for a voucher total of $871,765.74. We have in-house budget revisions for General Fund to be approved for county commission, courthouse, other buildings, teen court, law enforcement, jail reimbursable, home confinement, and dog warden. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website and fiduciary orders for June 16th, 2021.
Motion for approval?
Should move. Second?
All the first and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any separate fiduciary issues? Okay. Next item on the agenda is introduction of new employees, personnel changes?
There is one on the agenda, but they have withdrawn that.
Okay.
I believe the tax office has one?
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good morning. We are happy to say that we are filling a vacancy that we've had since last year. This is Nicholas or Nick Chambers.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And his start date is today, June 16th, and his annual salary will be $30,000.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome to the county.
Thank you very much.
Happy to be here. Thank you. Okay. No other personnel issues or matters?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Comments from the public. We'll now open a meeting for a public comment. Any member of the public wishing to be heard must raise his hand, come forward and provide his or her name for the record. Please note the time will be limited to three minutes unless circumstances warrant additional time as approved by the president. Do we have anybody who would like to speak?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Jeremy Huestead. I'm a medical doctor.
Jeremy, if you want to take that off at the podium, that's fine.
Sure. Thank you. It's nice not to have to sweat under it. Appreciate it. Thanks to the efforts of our public health folks, we're able to do things like this now that we wouldn't a year ago. So my name's Dr. Jeremy Huestead. I work at WVU Medicine. I'm here representing some of the other clinicians, physicians, and pharmacists concerned with medical cannabis in our county. We have a letter that we'd like to submit to you all detailing some of those concerns. Also, we'd like to work with you going forward to kind of explain it because as up until this point, there really hasn't been a whole lot of discussion from the medical community about this. So our concerns primarily rest along the lines of, one, the effect on youth, especially with the number of dispensaries that are supposed to go into place. We don't have more than 100,000 people in this county, and we want 14 dispensaries. The entire state of California, they have 40,000, excuse me, 40 million people, and there's only 500 total dispensaries in the entire state. So we have enough for the entire state that'll be going into our county as of right now. So we're very concerned about that. We're also concerned that if we are calling it medical marijuana, that at the same time they do not want to be, they do not want to fall under the public health, the county health department, that they can actually regulate them. I was watching last week's comments comparing it to sheets and then comparing it to more of a pharmacy. If a pharmacy were to go in place here, the pharmacy certainly would be under the umbrella of the public health, Long County Public Health, and would not be able to freely distribute and do things without falling under. So you can't really have it both ways where you call yourself medical, but then you refuse to, refuse to follow the regulations of the local community public health. Especially with the era of COVID, we realize how vastly important public health is, and they've certainly helped us get through this, and I just don't want us to turn our back on them now because of concerns for big business and special interest driven. So I appreciate you all letting me speak, and like I said, we'll have a letter for you signed by many people within our department, including the Chair of Psychiatry, Dr. James Berry, who's definitely an expert on cannabis, and many other people, including folks that work with adolescents and teens. I myself, I run the dual diagnosis addiction unit, so I've certainly treated a number of folks with cannabis problems. So I just, I appreciate you letting me speak today.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in.
Do you know when you'll be sending your letter?
We have it right here.
Oh, is it, you just want to get it signed?
We have it, and we can give it to you all to review. It's up to you. I have it here. I have several copies for you.
If you just want to give a copy to our administrator?
Okay.
And then if you, if the letter's signed by the individuals as you indicate it, you can just send that, drop that off later. But our contact would be our administrator, Renetta McClure.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next?
I'm going to take my mask off, too.
Sure.
Mark Nusselrod with Black Diamond Realty and Glenmark. Appreciate the commission's work in the last couple of weeks on the medical cannabis issues. I believe you're in receipt of comments and letters from citizens, doctors, insurers, municipalities, elected officials over the last 12 or so months, stakeholder letters from property owners and medical cannabis dispensaries. You know, we've submitted public comments to the regulation amendment, third-party stakeholder legal opinion letters to try to frame, you know, the Senate Bill 12, as well as some other issues to help educate the commission and inform the commission as to some powers and authority. You know, I believe the commission has its legal opinion from the fall, and I'm of the understanding there's a legal opinion in the works for the commission, which is great. All those facts and sentiment and law overwhelmingly support permitting the dispensaries to open in Montegay County without further disruption at this point in the manner that the legislature and the Office of Medical Cannabis intended and will oversee and regulate, and I'm sure probably be open to working with the county health department to ensure there aren't any issues with youth or undesirable consequences. But we've got to rest on the laurels of best practices and what the state legislature intended and what the Office of Medical Cannabis intends to regulate. We've learned that the Board of Health has exceeded its statutory authority. It's engaged in, trying to engage in the practice of zoning, which is reserved for municipal and county planning commissions. The regulations are just inconsistent with state law. The Board of Health additionally has violated the Open Meetings Act with its actions on May 27th. The agenda said, you know, unfinished business, medical cannabis, that's really generic and insufficient notice for them to take a vote and impose or adopt regulations and set forth public comments of an amended regulation. And to use a crime prevention of law enforcement to go into exemption, to go into special session, and then not really have a chance for public comment, I mean, that's, that's just questionable, especially after six months of silence from last November. Fortunately, though, Senate Bill 12 gives the commission really a duty to take some action and the authority to disapprove the regulation and the amendment. And on behalf of stakeholders, we really urge the commission to put that on, especially next week's agenda, take a vote and disapprove both. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Who else? Delegate Williams, welcome.
Hey, thank you very much. Thank you, commissioners, for having me. I'm John Williams. I'm one of the delegates that represents Montegay County in the House of Delegates. I want to thank you for your service to our county, especially the past year during COVID. Very appreciated with the actions that you took. I, too, am here to talk about medical cannabis in Montegay County. I can't provide for you legislative intent, as I am one of 100 members of one chamber of the state legislature, but I can give you some background on my experience with this issue. Ever since there was a discharge motion in March of 2017 to have this issue brought to the floor so that the people's representatives could vote on it, medical cannabis has been watered down at every single possible turn. The possibility of having pain management treatment that is different from the opioids that ravage our state has been watered down continuously at every turn. That's the practical effect of what's happening when this issue gets watered down. And it was frustrating to see at the state level, and so I was frustrated. Six months ago, when I first learned that the Board of Health in my home county was, in my view, further watering it down, making it more difficult for the business to happen. And it's not a business issue, it is a consumer issue. If we are so burdensome on the people who are trying to help our patients at a local level, we are ergo being burdensome on the consumer of Montegay County who wants an alternative when it comes to pain management. And so I would ask that, under the new powers that this commission has under Senate Bill 12, that you would consider denying the regulations put forth by the BOH. I do want to say that I appreciate their commitment to our county and their public service, but this is one issue where I do not agree with them on. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Anybody else like to speak?
Could keep this on to speak?
If you'd like to.
Yeah, or you can take it off.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you can take it.
You can take it off if you want to.
I bet you're asking if you could speak.
David Beaffor, 6,200 Minute Atlantic Drive. I'm here just to address a basic concern of a power grab and, you know, the things that have been going on throughout the country, throughout the state, now throughout the county. You know, it's a struggle to do business today and pay taxes, but we all do it. And what I'm understanding, the health department's trying to more or less zone dispensaries, okay? You know, they've gone and stopped people from being able to smoke in private clubs, and it's tough. I've got real estate, there's a lot of people around here that have real estate that they could lease to a cigar bar. And when the county commission steps up, you know, they're for the good of the people, but something private and something that's taxpaying, there's just a big concern. And I don't have all details on everything, but, you know, been wanting to address or see how we could work with the health department. And I've talked to some of the people there on the board, and they said, well, just no smoking. But Marion County can smoke, so we have a shopping center down there that we're putting a cigar bar in. Now, it might not sound like a lot, you know, that little bit of rent, $30,000 a year, but it's jobs and it pays taxes, okay? These dispensaries that I'm understanding that are coming under fire is absolutely a power grab. You know, what's next? And that's our great fear. My son and my nephew has entered the business with my brother and I, and like a lot of family businesses around here, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to stay where we need to be, and other communities allow things. Now, I may, again, not have all details, but my main concern is, and has always been, and most entrepreneurs and developers, is keeping the government out of our business because the government really is tough. And we could go on and on and on, but just like this countywide planning that's in there, it's really zoning in disguise. And I've sent texts to each one and talked to some of you, and I don't appreciate some of the feedback, and I think there needs to be some more roundtable, and there will be some more roundtable discussion because we do care. And if we're going to listen to our newspaper and the media, then we're not going to get anywhere because they're all left-wing. And everybody knows I speak how I think. You know, I might not have the right words in the right place, but our reputation and our quality of developing, like a few other people around here that have developed this town, can speak for itself. But the power grab and the way that people try to get, when I say people, bureaucracies are trying to get in, in what we call zoning or taking your rights away, that's a taking of the property. And there's one thing we're not going to stand for. You know, we took care of the actual annexation, and it was a battle and cost a lot of money that shouldn't be. And, you know, you all need to, in my opinion, control or not control the proper, not be the dictator is basically what it needs to be. And really, I think there's too much power there in the health department, and you can't back them on stuff that they're taking rights away because they can be a problem. We do need them for the health and welfare of the community, but they're overstepping their grounds like most bureaucracies. But for what it's worth, I don't have all the words straight, but I think you all know what we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beaffor.
Thanks, Dave.
Would anybody else like to speak? Seeing no one further, I'll close the public comment session. Next item on the agenda is Colleen Coon Grants.
I have requests for reimbursement today. The first one's for the Governor's Highway Safety Program, Safe Communities in the amount of $1,188.97. No, I'm sorry. That was click it or ticket. This one is Safe Communities, and it's $999.50. The next one is impaired driving in the amount of $2,906.93. I also have the VOCA grant in the amount of $10,614.64. And lastly, the SEEP grant in the amount of $2,826.65.
Move for approval. Second?
I have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is correspondence.
You received a letter of thanks from the Mountaineer Area Robotics Team regarding the allocation of $3,500 for fiscal year '22. Commission received correspondence regarding medical cannabis from Spillman, Thomas &amp; Battle. This is from Mr. Nusselrod and other individuals regarding the medical cannabis, and then also from white law offices regarding medical cannabis. That's it.
Anything else? Okay. Commissioners, any correspondence you want to add?
Just copied in on the same with the many letters regarding medical cannabis.
Okay. Unfinished business? There's none. New business? Consideration of requisition number 54 for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount.
Request is for $806,937.96 for the month of, collections for the month of May.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Should approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Just for a quick discussion, that is the, obviously, that's the amount that was deposited, that's less the $100,000 statutory lien and tax ministration fee. And just putting that in perspective, the collections in perspective for the past three fiscal years, last year, we had an increase of about 1.95% from the previous fiscal year collections in the district. This year, with the last two months, which have been both record months, we have a 25% increase in collections in the Exetis District, which represents, that amount that was collected in the past year represented about $99 million in sales. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Next item is to consider approving an order amending the boundaries of the city of Morgantown as proposed in a petition for annexation without election. Those certain parcels of real estate particularly described as Morgan District, map one, parcels 15.1 and 15.2. Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second? Second. Discussion?
Just for clarification, this is the?
Suncrest property.
Suncrest property. Yes.
Correct. Suncrest Elementary.
Yes.
And this was actually in the works about before the school was built.
Right.
Seven years ago, I believe, the agreement was to build a school and then bring it into the city, so it's been somewhat delayed, but that's the action in front of us. So we have a first and a second. Without any further discussion, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Next item on the agenda is consider approving an order amending the boundaries of city Morgantown as proposed in a petition for annexation without election. Those certain parcels of real estate particularly described in the plat and description as Clinton District, map four, parcel 8.2. Do we have a motion?
Move for approval with discussion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, just for clarification for the public, there's been a lot of confusion. The city had approved this and annexed it, but not until we approve it does it become official. And there was a lot of confusion on that, and it's only the quote Ramada Inn project, it's not other areas. And I think there needs to be, I was just trying to clarify that.
Correct. And in both instances, the entity that actually controls the property is petitioning the city to be included. So our review of that is just to make sure that everything's in proper form and approve.
Correct.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Motion approved. Consideration to approve two appointments to the Public Defender Corporation?
Who to approve?
The second. And discussion, would you, Renetta, the two individuals?
Rachel Cohen and Darlene Dunn.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right. To consider for approval requests from Stewartstown Community Council for funding in the amount of $1,800 to complete parking area and interior building upgrades for fiscal year 2022.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? This is essentially to upgrade the interior and parking area of Stewartstown Community Center, and generally, I believe they're incurring some costs, too.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, the commission always asks for some skin in the game, and, as I understand it, they're going to be collecting the rest of the proceeds required for the project. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. We have any other new business? Okay. Reports from elected officials and/or department supervisors? Reports from county commissioners? Jeff?
Just that with the, I've had a lot of calls about the flooding last week, and just our official position is we're waiting on the studies, the engineers to look and see what happened and how it can be prevented in the future, and we're still awaiting that data to see exactly what was the cause of that. Along with the flooding or the massive rainstorm we had, the rail trails did take a big hit in several spots. They've been working really hard, between Bo Park and the Board, it's been working really hard to get those cleared. We had a few washouts, a lot of trees down, things that you can imagine would happen, but I think there was only one part of the trail closed, and I believe it's back open now, and they're working hard to get that cleared and back to full use. That's all I have.
Tom?
Yes. First, Mountaineer Food Bank with Pantry+More is going to have the major food giveaway this Saturday at the WVU Coliseum, and they also, Pantry+More is every Saturday distributing food and is working with the school system so we can get the school food out. And I do appreciate Carol Atkins, who's been a major part of allowing us to be able to provide the foods in the building, and I really do appreciate that. This morning, I had a meeting, right before this meeting, with the West Virginia Coalition of Homelessness and the City Council. We were looking at possibilities, fundings, and grants for developing and building some small areas for homes for the homeless, and we are still, it's still in discussion stage at that time. And finally, I know there's a lot of people here, and I think all three of us have received an enormous amount of information, questions, concerns about what the Board of Health did with the regulations, and I think all three of us are very concerned that we followed the process, and I want to thank Delegate Williams for coming in and explaining a little more the intent. And I know tomorrow, we have a meeting at 4:00? 4:00 to have some more discussion on this. We aren't going to take any action today because we need to have this discussion first, but I know that I will ask, and I think all three of us, we'll have it on the agenda in some way next week to have a discussion. And I don't, we're going to do our due diligence, and we will do what we believe is best for the interests of the citizens of Montegay County. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Since the last meeting, last Thursday, I had the Red Team meeting and the Development Authority meeting. On Friday, we had staff reports, and we had our first broadband call with our consultant, and it was very positive. This week, I had JUMA call, the Joint Use Management Agreement that manages the Aquatic Contract Center. Today's a regular day, though we do have staff reports today instead of Friday, and at the end of the day, I have a Morgantown Area Partnership meeting, which I'm on that board. Tomorrow, we have Mountain Park Board meeting. We have a broadband call with our consultant, and we're working on some really exciting stuff that we may be able to actually have some early wins. Pedestrian initiative, pedestrian safety initiative, if I can make that, but I know Tom will be intending for us if I don't. And then, as Tom mentioned, in the afternoon, we have the meeting with the Board of Health. Friday, we do not have any scheduled meetings. It is, it's a little confusing, but we've got some indication that the governor has proclaimed it a state, an unpaid state holiday. So we can't find any proclamation, but it's kind of confusing as far as how that would work. I guess it would just basically be considered liberal leave, but we're trying to, we're trying to get some update on that. In general, it's Father's Day weekend. Don't forget all the fathers. You know, have a, hopefully, you have a restful Father's Day weekend. It's time to celebrate everything that the fathers do for your families. And then the other thing is the medical cannabis, obviously, that's what was brought up, and I know that there's a lot of concern, but please trust the prudent nature of this commission, that we're going to look at things thoroughly. We don't necessarily jump when people say you should do this. We review, we act, and we try to understand. Our meeting tomorrow with the Department, with the Board of Health is really a fact-finding to really just have a one-on-one conversation with the Board of Health in regards to their thought process, so we thoroughly understand them. We have to understand we're on the same team. You know, it's our Board of Health that has just done a yeoman's job in leading us through this pandemic, and we want to simply make sure we understand where we each are, and then we take the actions appropriately. So I know it's not, sometimes it seems to take longer than expected, but in regards to normal actions that come before this commission, this thing has been proceeding very fast in regards to getting to a resolution. So I just ask for continued patience and trust that the commission is going to continue doing what we've always done, is look at each item that comes before us and make very informed, unbiased decisions. So again, I just thank everybody for their participation. It's a shame that Mr. Beaffor left because he brought up the annexation example, and that one-
It's a shame that Mr. Beaffor left, because he brought up the annexation example, and that one was always a thorn in my side, that the state actually passed it, that needed, thought they needed to pass, because I sit here as a commissioner, we sit here as commissioners, and we're going to look at everything that comes in front of us. And if we have to make tough decisions, we have to make tough decisions, but the legislature, through the urging of citizens, decided that they wanted to take that power away from us, and that's fine. That's the legislature's priority. Priori, prior, prerogative. Peregative. Jesus.
Peregative.
Peregative. So anyhow, and again, Delegate Williams, I appreciate your efforts in Charleston. We don't always agree. You voted down this SB 12, which we as a commission don't like. This statute that now we have to take in action because of, you know, we, our association was firmly against it, and you're on the side of the, the County Commission Association was fervently against this thing being passed, and we're the ones that the requirements were being put on to now, you know, the responsibility is now on our back. And, you know, again, our job is to deal with the statute that's passed and follow it. So again, I appreciate everybody's in the room's efforts. You know, the end result may be, and I told this to the Board of Health last year, that, you know, you need to, maybe you need to look at this from the state and try to fix it from the state up, rather than trying to, trying to make something out of a statute that it may not be. So anyhow, we're going to have a firm discussion with this, and Tom, you're right, in order, at the advice that I sent you last night from our legal counsel, our job is to act within 30 days. So we essentially have through the end of the month, so we'll probably have to put in action on our agenda next Wednesday to address this. So anyhow, thanks, everyone. You guys have anything else?
Yes, sir.
Want to take a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.